All right. Thanks for everybody joining us today. We are recording the meeting, so if you do have public comment, please state your name before you start. We will take public comments on agenda items only. At the end of the meeting, we will have a conversation related to the TPA. I believe there's some folks in the back that are interested to make public comment in that. Is that correct? We're going to try to get some folks. We have standing room only essentially, so we're going to try to get some of these folks out of here and back to their day. So we will hold public comments to the end and we'll open up at that point. So, public comments on agenda items only. All right, hearing none. I'll request a motion to approve the minutes from the March 11th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
All right. Casey, personal items?
Yes, I have a few items for the board this morning. The first is information. We have received resignation from Penny Whipple, the Director of Elections and Motor Registration. That was effective 3/14/25. I have some items for approval this morning. If we could please approve the hire of Jason Patterson as a part-time custodian at 13:50 per hour with no benefits.
I'll make the motion for approval for Jason.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
The next item I have is to please approve the hire of Jamie Barnes for intake caseworker at Family Services at 18:30 per hour with benefits.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion for Jamie.
Motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
The next item I have is to approve the hire of Olga Betts for ongoing caseworker one in Family Services at 18:30 per hour with benefits.
I'll make the motion for Olga.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next item I have is to please approve the hire of Brett Mathers for part-time emergency services training coordinator at $19 per hour with benefits.
I'll gladly make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
And the last item that I have is to approve the promotion of Cindy Alexander to interim Director of Elections and Motor Registration at $50,000 per year effective 3/31/25.
I'll make the motion for the promotion.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Casey.
Next up, we received a request to use the courthouse parking lot for a staging area for the Mammoth Endurance Scrabble Book Ride, which is an annual event now. Are you in town?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up, we have a request from the Chamber of Commerce. And this actually takes the next two bullet items to use the green for Laurel Festival activities, as well as the steps, the courthouse parking lots, and the green again for the Waste Management STPR.
Sure. I'll request a motion for the approval of both of those items.
I'll make a motion for both of those items.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up, our listed a couple of county real estate tax refunds.
I'll request a motion for approving the real estate tax refunds.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up, we have a revision to an existing tax collection agreement with UPMC and the county in Reno.
I'll make the motion to approve the revision.
What is the revision?
We will have comment here. Josh is here to make comments.
Yep, I'll second the motion.
And I would say, you know, we've had conversations with UPMC in regard to an agreement that had been in place for 10 years. We were unable to come to an agreement in the interpretation of the UPMC agreement that was in place, so we took the option to terminate that agreement and we renegotiated a new agreement with less ambiguous language, very clear to the point. It keeps the sentiment of the previous agreement in place, but again, an agreement that we could all come to terms on and approve.
Yeah, so just to add some additional information to that, the agreement was actually entered into in 2023 with the county. It stems from a 2021 appeal that was filed by the borough, Wellsboro Borough and Wellsboro Area School District challenging the tax exempt status at UPMC and the properties within the borough. That was filed in 2021. The county removed the exemption at that point, and that was then filed to common pleas. In 2022, the borough and the school district settled under Act 55, the Purely Public Charities Act in 1997. Municipalities can enter into voluntary, what they call like pilot payments or community contribution agreements. So the borough and the school district entered into agreements and settled with UPMC in 2022, and then the county entered into an agreement in 2023. So this revised agreement just clarifies prior stipulations that were in the agreement with regard to the value and then the new reassessments that took effect in 2024. The old agreement had the old 2023 values in it, so this just clarifies what values that they're making payment on going forward. So it also clarifies how the payments are received through the normal tax collection process with a local tax collector.
Thank you, Josh. We want to be good partners with UPMC, but we also want to be fair to our taxpayers. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Or I guess we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up, we have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
I'll read this. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur anytime that require police, fire, or emergency medical service, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our responders and departments upon its, I'm sorry, the safety of our responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Tyrood County Communications Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and EMS personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers of the Tyrood County Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and treatment of patrons, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners of Tyrood County declare the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, to be National Telecommunicators Week in Tyrood County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I appreciate the recognition of these folks for this week. You know, National Telecommunicators Week is across the nation. We have some of the absolute best outstanding telecommunicators in this county that are there day in, day out, every day of the year, so I appreciate their recognition.
And we saw their commitment August 8th when our community needed them the most. So, a lot of those folks worked overtime. I took 1,000 calls that day. I can't remember the number.
There were a lot of calls.
There was a lot of calls that day, and subsequently really helped us operate the EOC and help communicate the disaster over in the valley, so.
Yeah, and they're really, you know, one of those things where they don't ever get, you know, patted on the back like they should because you only call them when you need them and you don't hear about what they do. But witnessing the way that they respond to people, the empathy they have, the compassion, and to keep a cool head and get people through hard situations, it's a tough job. And they do great. We're lucky to have them. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
The next motion, proclamation we have is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, which is in May, but our meeting.
Sam, would you like to read this one?
Yeah.
Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas the safety of all Tyrood County motorists is an issue, and the highest consequence of all highway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout Tyrood County. Motorcycle riding is a popular forum, a lot of popular forum recreation and transportation for thousands of folks in our county and nation. Licensed motorcyclists are required to keep their vehicles inspected, obey current laws relative to operating safe equipment. Especially important for citizens to be, in our county, to be aware of motorcycles on the streets, highways, and recognize the importance of staying alert, practicing safe driving techniques, and promoting motorcycle safety. During the month of May, the Grand Canyon Chapter of Alliance for Bikers Aimed Towards Education, ABAE, of Pennsylvania will continue their advocacy for motorcycle safety and awareness, and stay active in promoting motorcycle safety through both motorists and rider education, and improving the image of motorcyclists to the general public. Now therefore, as recognized the importance of motorcycle safety to our county's roads and highways, the Tyrood County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. All motorcyclists are encouraged to continue their safe efforts for safety and motorcycle awareness, and all drivers share the road and respect the unique safety needs of motorcyclists. And we have a rep here from ABAE. We're always happy to champion with them. They're doing great things out there. And are we going to do a ride again this May? Is that a plan?
Dylan Lamb with OSAL Coordinator, Operation Save a Life Coordinator for Grand Canyon ABAE. I'm here with Melvin Hall, our legislative coordinator for ABAE. We're still working on the ride right now. On May 2nd, this is open to the public at the Wellsboro Park and Danex. I'm actually going to do a Operation Save a Life presentation. It'll be at 2:00 PM, take approximately an hour.
That's a Friday, right?
Yeah, that's a Friday. I do have letters for anybody for you guys. I'll give it to you at the end of the meeting. But for anybody curious, Grand Canyon ABAE, we are a nonprofit in the area that all money we raise goes back into the community along with a little bit going to our Operation Save a Life. And we also work with our legislative people in Harrisburg to change the laws a bit better for the bikers. I want to thank you guys for recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and if anybody here has any questions, get with me or Melvin after the meeting, we'd be glad to answer them.
Sure. Thanks for coming out, so I appreciate it. Thanks for you guys.
Okay, up next is the adopted resolution R-225. And this is the county local match for Endless Mountains Transportation Authority. We do this every year.
Did we vote on the proclamation? I apologize.
We did not.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Not that it matters, but.
It does matter. Up next, we have the resolution R-225, local match for Endless Mountains Transportation Authority, which will come out of Act 13. This is for fiscal year 2526.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any conversation? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Up next is a re, annual resolution that we do for the housing authority. It is resolution R-325, the Fair Housing Resolution.
All right, this one's kind of a long one. I may summarize this one just a bit, if that's okay. Is Dan here?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, right now.
All right, be it resolved that within available resources, Tyrood County will assist all persons who feel they have been discriminated against because of race, color, sex, national origin, religion, familial status, handicap, disability, age, and ancestry to seek equality under federal and state laws by filing a complaint with the local fair housing officer, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, whichever is chosen by the person filing complaint. Be it further resolved that Tyrood County shall make publicly known this resolution, and through this publicity shall cause owners of real estate, developers, and builders to become aware of their respective responsibilities and rights under the federal fair housing law, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, and any other local laws and ordinances. Again, approved of the regularly scheduled meeting in the Tyrood County held April 15th, 2025. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is resolution R-425, and this is the appointment of a Section 504 officer.
All right. Again, another resolution here that's fairly lengthy. We will go through this. All entities guarantees that community economic development block grant, CDBG, or home funds with more than 15 employees are required to have a Section 504 officer. Be it resolved on this 15th day of April, 2025, that Tyrood County appoints Sean Sember to be such officer with the following responsibilities. Compile and maintain a shelf, self-evaluation of the grantees' facilities, hiring practices, and citizens' participation, as well as each activity funded with aforementioned grants to assure that there has been no discrimination in providing of services based on race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, familial status, age, or ancestry. Tyrood County will develop and maintain a grievance procedure that must be adopted publicly, incorporating due process standards, and allowing for prompt local resolution of any complaints or discrimination based on disability. Existing grievance procedures can often be adopted to satisfy this requirement. Any individual or authorized representative who believes that they have been denied opportunity or treated differently due to their race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, familial status, age, or ancestry may file a complaint with a Section 504 officer. The officer must act on the complaint and maintain the records of the process for monitoring. Approved today at the April 15th. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is resolution R-525, and this is for the Mansfield project.
All right, Tyrood County Board of Commissioners, resolution R-2525. A resolution of the Tyrood County Board of Commissioners, Tyrood County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the submission of a request for funding through the Commonwealth Finance Authority Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewers Program. Be it resolved that the Tyrood County Board of Commissioners hereby request a PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant of $500,000 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to be used for the replacement of a four-by-eight box pulver in the borough of Mansfield. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Mark Rice, Commissioner, and Jennifer Cochran, Assistant Chief Clerk, as officials to execute all documents and agreements between Tyrood County and the Commonwealth Finance Authority to facilitate and assist in obligating the requirement, required grants. I, Janice Chamberlain, duly qualified Chief Clerk of Tyrood County hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct copy of the resolution duly adopted by majority vote of the Tyrood County Board of Commissioners at a regular meeting held April 15th, 2025, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of Tyrood County and remains in effect as of this date. All right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
And with conversation, you know, the county continues to partner with Mansfield Borough to work on the Arch Pike Project, and this is just a piece of the funding strategy, so. We are not funding any local match or commitment to that. Our relationship in this situation is just to help them apply for grant funding, so. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is Penn State Extension. Their yearly budget allocation is listed there. We pay it quarterly, and this year we are using Act 13 rather than general fund.
All right. Thank you. I think we have a, yeah, do you want to kind of give a presentation on what this money does for your program?
Yeah, absolutely. I think a brief overview. So a portion of it goes to our, first off, I'm Sarah, well-defined relationship manager for Mansfield Extension. A portion of it goes to our 4-H educator to support her. She currently has about 234 4-H members enrolled, but her enrollment doesn't officially end until May 1st, so I'm sure she's going to add in a couple more. She also has 52 volunteers that she oversees, with another 10 going through the process right now to become volunteers, so which is fantastic because the program can't happen without them as well. Another portion goes to our Master Gardener Coordinator. She oversees 24 volunteers currently, who are constantly busy throughout the county, providing programming like See to Supper and the library seed packet program that they have going. And then tonight, she actually has on a 6:00 PM, Michaela's presenting the history of the Victory Gardens at the Knoxville Public Library, so head on over there to hear her. And then last one at least, your reading portion goes to our Austin Administrator, who's sent us easy, and then anything else that she might need in the office, so. We have lots going on, so please don't hesitate to stop in for any like water testing kits, soil testing kits, or sample testing, anything, so. If you have any questions, please find me out.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
I think we had a couple of your 4-H youth in here last meeting to honor them, some of their successes they've had over this last year, so. Thank you for sharing. I think it's a great program for our community, and to be honest with you, to have 234 4-H members, I didn't know that it was that high, so thank you for all you do. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up, we have the Tyrood County Historical Society. We also do an annual budget allocation request from them, and again, we will take it from Act 13. Scott, if you'll listen here.
Scott, it's great to see you. If you want to, you know, share a few words of, you know, what you do over the Historical Society and what this funding is used for.
I'm Scott, Scott Getrell, Director of Tyrood County Historical Society. We operate the Robinson House Museum, which is right next door to the courthouse. We have about seven rooms of displays there, and we're open free of charge to anyone. We have school tours and that. We also operate the Tyrood County Farm, Mine, and Lumber Museum, the fairgrounds. That's open during the week of the fair and also early days, and it's also available in climate weather for groups, and things will try to make arrangements. And then we also have the Osceola Blockhouse, which is an 1835 log house in Osceola, Pennsylvania, and we will be working with Bob Goodrich, my buddy over there, for Osceola. I think it's the first time you're having a.
First, first Osceola Heritage Day, July 11 and 12.
So we'll be, we'll be open there, and I hope everybody can come out. The Black House, by the way, is built in 1835 and is basically unaltered from 1830, never had running water, electricity, or anything like that, so it's very interesting. Bob's been there with the school a number of times, and so hope to, hope to see you there.
Thanks, appreciate that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
Next up, the board received a request from the Commonwealth University of Mansfield Public Safety Training Institute for funding to help with their program, and we do, Chris Wheeler and Jim Bodine are here today.
Yeah, Chris, Jim, would you, thank you for reaching out to us via letter. Janice kind of looked back through as to what the county had done in the past as far as support to your program, so can you give kind of an overview of what you guys have been working on and what you would ask out of us?
Certainly. My name is Chris Wheeler. I'm the Director of the Public Safety Training Institute and the Municipal Police Academy at Mansfield University, and Jim Bodine is here with me today as well. He is the Training Coordinator for the program, as well as the Act 235 Director. So what we do is we provide academy training for basic police officer training certification in Pennsylvania. It's a six-month program. We've been doing it since the 1970s at Mansfield, so we are one of the authorized training academies in this state. In addition to that, Jim runs the Act 235 program, which is armed security training, which is required for anybody that is going to work as an armed security officer in Pennsylvania. In addition to that, we also provide in-service training to current police officers. In the past, the Commissioners have granted us an amount of $30,000 a year. We would ask for that again, and I welcome any questions anybody has as far as use or anything like that.
Do you get a lot of folks from our community that they use the program?
So Jim and I were doing some talking just the other day. We believe, with the exception of one police officer in Tyrood County, every single municipal police officer in Tyrood County has come through our county. So we have three Tyrood County applicants for the coming class that starts in May. Last class, we brought four new police officers into the county for two different municipalities, and that included bringing two people from out of the area into Tyrood County, so we brought two residents in that are hired on as police officers already.
Yeah, and I'm sure Jim will attest to this, that it's really hard to find municipal officers, you know, for burrows and townships, and this, without you all doing this, I don't know what we would do. Quite honestly, I just don't think we would be able to recruit enough people up here to fill positions, so it is appreciated.
Yeah, and we definitely want to support the program, so we will, we will be in touch.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Well, actually, I'll entertain a motion to table that for review and further discussion.
Yep, I'll make the motion to table it.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is a proposal from Larson Design Group to help look at and determine what needs to be removed from the flood last year.
Yeah, just a little bit of background, and Marty, you can probably speak better to this, but I'll take a stab at it. We've been asking DEP for some reports that were done back in December, cataloging the debris, specifically the garbage around Troops Creek, Upper Pine Creek, and some of the tributaries into Caneski. And just about a week ago, we did get that report from Tetra Tech, from DEP, or maybe from PMA. One or the other. And then we were told we had to quickly move. I think we have two weeks to put in the grant application to try to get funding from PMA through FEMA to remove some of this debris, so we want to bring on Larson Design Group to help us identify these areas and provide a scope of work so that we can put an estimate to removing that material from the stream. Did I hit it? Okay.
Yeah, it was a requirement of the grant that we had to have a professional cost estimate, and if it goes through, this would be reimbursed versable to back to the county.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I'm Jennifer McCarthy. I live near Wellsboro. I was part of the crew last Saturday that went out on the Upper Pine, and I'm astounded. I mean, it was overwhelming to me to see, you know, we thought, okay, we'll go out with some trash bags. No, we're talking refrigerators, we're talking, you know, parts of camper trailers. It's amazing. Whole boat, boat trailers are kind of submerged halfway in the creek, you know. It's unbelievable, the amount of stuff that's out there. You know, Westfield had worse than never before, so. And I'd like to commend Erica Tomlinson, Scott Lee, and the staff of Pine Creek Outfitters who organized that and got us all out there, and, you know, a pretty cool group of people.
Absolutely. I can't say enough how Erica Tomlinson has championed cleaning up the debris in our stream, so thank you for bringing that up as well. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. So do we have...
I'll, I'll make the motion to move forward with this.
I'll second the motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marty and Lisa, for your work on that as well.
Next up is a proposal from President Construction to purge and paint the foundation around the new veterans' chairs building.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Good discussion. So Fred, are we going to merge the old brown with the new clean block and make it all the same in the back then, on the VA?
Yes.
Or just the new? Because the old was kind of chipping off.
The entire building.
Okay.
Yeah, because the old is in, in not that great a shape, so.
So those are going to put an addition on, so you have new clean block, and you have old brown paint that's chipping off, falling off, and looks kind of ratty. So we're going to make it all look uniform together and preserve the new work that's been done.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm cuffed about that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Next up is a proposal from Glenn Hobaker for the Patterson Trailhead Site Development Project.
Jen, do you want to give us kind of an overview of what all this includes and what we got here?
Sure. So back when we first started working on the site development, we received a rather large credit in our grant because we decided to keep the soils on-site instead of, it was a huge expense to take them off-site to dispose of them. So with this credit, we're able to, to plant trees, to build a playground, to install trash cans, bike racks, and benches for that recreation facility down there at no cost to the taxpayers.
Okay, so this cost would, would chew into the credit?
It would.
I don't remember exactly.
It was the three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollar credit.
Okay. All right.
I will make the motion to approve this. It helps the selling point for me that, you know, that it's coming through the credit and it's not on us, so, yeah.
If, if we didn't do it this way, down there, there would be an empty pavilion and an empty lot. Eventually down the road, maybe we'd have to buy trash cans for and picnic tables for. And to do it this way, I mean, if, you know, we could send the money back, which would affect our match, it would actually make our match go up. The county would actually have to spend more of its own money. So this is the best way to get those things for our community at, at no cost to the taxpayer themselves.
Yeah, I'll second. Yeah, granted, it's definitely tricky. It must have been like Jen, who explains stuff to us. From the outside looking in, it looks like, wait, what? We have to give money back and then pay more money? But in the grand scheme of things, we've talked over a little bit, and it's been a deep discussion, but in the long game, it's going to be beneficial for everybody.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is a proposal from Elemental Shelter Solutions to fabricate, deliver, build a new salt shed, which will be up on Human Services property, and Liquid Fuels pays a hundred percent of that cost.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any way of conversation, Fred? Do you have anything you want to add?
Um, this is, I mean, this is something that we've needed for quite some time. Our current storage facility is not much more than a little addition off the barn, which is failing quickly. And it will allow much easier access for salt trucks to be able to dump and, and keep the weather off from our salt. But we need to maintain our facilities and roads. So I think it's a, it's, it's a much-needed building for us.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is a proposal from order to your solid waste authority for a new refuse container in the back of the courthouse there.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Yes, do we want to talk about the sheriff's people? I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Next on our agenda is a five-year lease agreement for a vehicle for the sheriff's office. And we'll open up for discussion. I don't know if, if we want to add anything. You know, we've been in a conversation with the sheriff, and he is unable to be here at this point. He's dealing with a situation. But we kind of want to give some backstory of how we got here. So the sheriff had two vehicles that were in pretty bad shape. He came to us during budget time and said, hey, look, I'm willing to get rid of these two vehicles to get another vehicle. There was a transport van, and then I believe a sedan. Some of the issue that he runs into with being a rural county and having a sedan, he's unable to get to some of these places that he has to serve warrants and papers for. So he made a request for a twenty-twenty-five Ford F-150 to be able to access some of those locations. I think he actually planned on providing some more information, but I don't know if you guys want to add anything?
And one of the things is sticker shock, like, in that price tag is built-in maintenance. So all the inspection, the oil changes, tires for that five-year period is built-in. For more of a fixed cost for us, we're not, you know, we buy a vehicle, there's surprises with maintenance. So with, on the lease agreement, that's kind of a fixed number for our budget. Every month, we know exactly how much is going to go out for that vehicle. There's no, like, surprise costs. It's kind of like, for me, it's like, okay, that kind of helps me justify the higher price tag. I mean, but it is going to be utilized quite a bit by the sheriff's department.
Well, and the outfit is, you know, fairly expensive, too, to get radios and lights and everything on the vehicle, so. All right, anything further?
And it was built into the budget.
Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next is, at the back of your agenda, there are nine agreements for the Department of Human Services.
I think the only question I had was potentially on number eight, the amendment with Wellspring. Was that just to include in, I'm sorry, to increase their maximum?
Uh, so that number, that amended contract max is a little deceiving.
Okay.
When we started the fiscal year, they were, we allocated sixty-three thousand. At midway point, when we went up to utilization, they needed an increase. So their First Amendment actually rose then to a hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Okay.
Due to utilization. And then to increase them to the hundred-and-forty-one, which is roughly another ten thousand, is actually a rate increase for the services per hour. It aligns their service rate with community care's rate. So that ten thousand just covers the difference in rate for March till the end of fiscal year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further questions?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up, just for information in the board, is March twenty-twenty-five payroll benefits and accounts payables numbers.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point of the meeting, we will request, you know, public comment. All right, hearing none. The next meeting of the Tyoka County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. And we will go into Commissioner news. And we wanted to kind of share a little bit about the conversations with the TPA and where we are currently. So, you know, coming into office, all three of us as new commissioners, you know, we had heard some, some items on the campaign trail that we wanted to look into dealing with the TPA. And we had our first meeting in March, thought it was a productive meeting with them, had a conversation. Went to a second meeting in July, and we were notified that we were not allowed to attend board meetings. So our conversations...
Can I speak for a second? This wasn't on the agenda.
Um, that's why we made mention, this is in Commissioner news. That's why I made mention that we can have a public comment at this point in regards to that.
It was not on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner news, we can share anything we want to talk about, Ken. This is our, and Commissioner news, we share things going on in the county. It's not a voteable topic. We're having a conversation. You're welcome to join in on. It's not, we, we never list anything for Commissioner news.
Then it becomes a conflict.
To have a conversation? We're not voting on anything. Nothing's being voted on. We're having a conversation. You can talk and have a conversation. That's fine.
We do respect James's request to speak today, and we are.
Okay.
Thank you, Kenny.
Listen, so, okay, I'm going to summarize this. Thank you for bringing that up, Ken. We have been in conversation with the Potter County Commissioners. We are hopeful to have a meeting with the six of us, to sit down and have a conversation. As well as we've heard from Ken through a township supervisor, that Visit Potter Tyoka is willing to come to the table and have a conversation. We are hopeful that we can settle our differences, understand how the TPA works, and where the five percent hotel tax goes, so.
And the other thing, too, is that we have sent out emails to the municipalities requesting them to hold decertification until we can try to let diplomacy rule the day.
All right, in other news, again, we want to thank the Conservation District, Erica Tomlinson, and all the folks in our community that have stepped up over this last weekend to clean up Upper Pine Creek. I don't know if you guys have seen the photos of the material that was removed from the stream, but it is truly eye-opening. Again, we're going to work with Erica and Larson Design Group, as well as the staff from EMS to identify those high-priority items, not only in Upper Pine, but Caneski and across the county. I believe there's a sewer tank in the Tyoka River that we would like to get out of the, you know. I don't think it was active when it washed down, but again, it'd be nice to get that out of the stream. So I want to say thanks to the Conservation District for that. And just a brief flood update. We continue to work with our state and federal partners to try to get whatever program we can for Tyoka County. The EWP program, which is the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, we got notice from FEMA that we were awarded, Tyoka County was awarded seven-hundred thousand dollars to do eight projects. And these are projects that are, the stream bank is within fifty feet of a house or a dwelling. So we are encouraged by that. So we actually had some conversation, the three of us, with DEP. Initially, we were told that the three-hundred thousand dollars for the state match wasn't available. But again, through conversations, we were able to get that three-hundred thousand dollar match from DEP. So we are super thankful that our state and federal partners are coming to the table to help us with this effort. It is a small piece of the pie. I know we're in conversations with some folks over in the Caneski Valley to try to do a localized cleanup. There are some farmers that are uneasy about leaving the stream the way it is. So we do want to continue to work through the process to get some of those gravel bars and debris piles removed up there, so.
Yeah, and the other thing, oh, wait there.
No, finish, finish your thought. I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, the other thing, too, is that, you know, government moves slow. And we can only do so much in the time. We all feel bad that as long as this takes to get this stuff cleaned up, you know. And when the flood happened, Clint Alllett said, this isn't going to take weeks, this is going to take months. I'm starting to believe that it's going to take years, you know. I, I just, and it's, I, I feel bad. We all feel bad. We want, I guess, in, in my mind, by, like, you know, I pictured an anniversary of the flood, and there's, it's done, you know? And that's just not the case. So it is, it's terribly frustrating, you know, that every time that, you know, it seems like we just about get something over the finish line. So these little wins are really, really important to us. It might not seem, pulling junk out of the river may not seem a lot in the bigger scope of things, but to us, it's huge. You know, it's those, we're just going to have to do this in baby steps and just keep moving forward and keeping our eye on the ball.
Yeah, I think the average is four years for cleanup, so, you know, we're in it for the long haul. And I heard that there's a Boag group maybe interested in coming in towards the end of the summer to do some volunteer work again, specifically around getting more of that debris out of the stream. So I think all these little programs, you know, combined together, you know, have a good impact. I know the three of us have been in conversations with Westfield Borough, as well as the Housing Authority about, you know, using some CDBG funding to clean the stream up, you know, in Westfield Borough. So we are encouraged by that opportunity as well. And, and Westfield's kind of taking the lead on that. And hopefully, we see a scope of work soon and can get in the streams and get some work done.
Kevin Conley, I, just to go back one step, I'd like to applaud the supervisors for taking, taking the steps to take the temperature down on this whole issue between Potter, Tyoka County, and the Visitors Bureau, and look to come up with an agreement that can work for everybody. It's a big step on your part, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. And just for an election update, you know, the election director resigned a few weeks ago. We applaud the election staff for stepping up. You know, thank you so much, Cindy, for stepping up. I mean, we have a primary election coming up here in just a few weeks at this point. And they've done an absolutely great job working through the ballot. They've worked well with our IT staff. I can't say enough good about, you know, our departments here, our IT staff. The three of them are wizards when it comes to IT stuff. So super thankful to have you all on our team and, and look forward to the, to the bright future, so thank you.
Yeah, and I know that that, you know, this is, this is kind of stepping into this role and, and learning everything at once and, and just appreciating it. The other part, too, is, is these IT guys are awesome. I mean, so anybody who knows me knows that I'm, I'm really bad with that stuff. And so I have them on speed dial whenever I goof something up, and they're, they're great. But on top of that, for the election, you know, we've even talked with other county commissioners, you know, us having that resource here and the way that they've worked for so long with the election staff anyway, and know the ins and outs of all this, has been invaluable. And these guys are willing to just, yep, what do you need us to do? So can't say enough. I, I think they're another set of unsung heroes.
Yes, they are.
Sure. All right, I see the sheriff was able to attend. Is there anything you want to add? We did take action to approve your lease, but is there anything you want to add to? We had the brief conversation around you got rid of two vehicles, essentially the transport vehicle and a sedan, in an effort to have an off-road vehicle to, you know, visit some of these more remote locations in Tyoka County.
Yes. I mean, that, that pretty much is it in a nutshell. It's, we just needed a more versatile vehicle to better protect and serve, honestly. We've, we've got some remote places in the county, which most of us know. We've had issues even last year's flooding. That, in, in itself, is a problem with certain vehicles that we have, and we weren't able to get to certain locations with what we have. So the truck, quite honestly, which is nothing new, it's been used across the U.S. for many, many years now. Very versatile vehicle, and it would be a great complement to our fleet, that's for sure. So if, and if there is any questions or whatever anyone has afterwards, I can stick around and answer those questions.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. All right, anything else for Commissioner news? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Commissioner meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will open up the Tyoka County Salary Board meeting, Public Commons. All right, hearing none. I'll request a motion to approve the minutes from the March eleventh meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, the item that we have for Salary Board today is an hourly rate increase of a dollar sixty-three per hour for Reva Baldwin, our victim witness coordinator in the District Attorney's Office. This is for additional role as a juvenile victim witness coordinator, retroactive to one-one-four-five. And the increase is a hundred percent.
All right, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. We'll enter into the Tioga County Retirement Fund Board. Any public comments? Hearing none. I'll request a motion to approve the minutes from the March 11th meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is payment of $2,276 to Corn Theory for March 2025 extra services.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next up is CNN's March 2025 management fee, $18,294.28.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Next is for information of the board.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the Tioga County Elections Board. Any comments this time for elections? Seeing none, we'll move along for approval of the minutes of the March 11th meeting. I'll make the motion for approval.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. For information, we have some stuff listed there, upcoming dates. Cindy, do you want to share anything upcoming, going on with the group?
Right now, we're just getting ready to put the sample ballots online. And we've ordered our ballots that we need for absentees, mail-ins, and all that, and then the regular election ballots. Things rolling quite smoothly.
Okay. I see we have a change of location here, going out in Ward Township. Noted there for those folks, that'll be... That's a pretty close, right? That changes...
It's very close. It's about 500 yards. You literally can see one building to the other. So it's, they'll still have signage and everything up, but we're going to get letters sent out to everyone who votes in Ward Township.
Okay.
And so they'll have that, and they'll also have signs and even a picture on the church so they know, just turn around and you can see where you're going.
It'll just be at the Township building now, right?
Yes.
We also got notice from Delmar Township that the bridge is out right by their facility there. So there will be a detour for folks that need to vote, which is kind of up and around. But we will, we will try to work on some press to get that out there, to let everybody know about that detour, and, you know, make sure they work enough time in their day.
Right, so Delmar North?
It's Delmar South.
Delmar South.
Yeah. The bridge just before the Township building there will be closed for reconstruction. And again, we, now, I don't know if that's something we could maybe run something in the paper in regard and share the, share the detour map. That'd be great.
And you look for poll workers still, Cindy? There's some vacancies we can still fill?
With Delmar South, yes. I do have a question later about, I have someone who I could help with.
Okay.
But I've had two calls that are, you know, interested parties to do Delmar South. But, yeah, we need a full board. They've all resigned.
Okay. Delmar South?
Delmar South.
Okay.
That's one of those things, kind of behind the scenes, you don't think about till you show up and see your friendly folks sitting there, but that's a need for those folks to step up and...
They resigned months ago. We were just never told.
Yeah. If you know anybody who wants to work on election, let us know.
They have to be part of that township?
Yes. Ideally, they'd be part of that township. I believe there's an option to have kind of a rover, someone that can kind of plug in wherever, but ideally, we'd have, you know, someone from that township. We can ask around and help with that as well.
And the next important dates there, make it out your last date of register if you want to partake in the election. And then May 20th, so coming right very quickly. I have to have a motion for adjournment? I'll make a motion?
I'll second it.
My first and second? All three with aye?
Aye.
All right.